Call this meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Brian Card.
Here.
Bear Galorens.
Here.
John Serenopoulos.
Here.
Matthew Wendorf.
Absent with notification.
Michael Huko.
Yeah.
And Keith Thurlow.
Yeah. Proceeding of alternates, that means Mr. Huko. Citizens comments on items. Any addendums first, that's right.
There's no addendums at this time. We do have some, at least two citizen comments. And I don't, I believe Mr. Goslin is here. And I do not know if Jody Klun is here. So if they want to both read their comments into the record, but I believe, let me see. Mr. Goslin's is in regards to something that's under a public hearing, so he can do the public hearing. But Judy's is more of a general, so it may be public comment now. So if she wants to come up and read it, do you have a copy of it with you, Judy? If not, I have a copy here. Would it be easier to read from mine? Thank you. Hi, Jody Klun, 20 Colonial Drive in Daville. So the comments I had sent in was, "One of the biggest reasons, or one of the big reasons that people moved to Killingley is for the small-town feel. It's certainly among the foremost reasons that I moved here, and my neighbors and friends cite it as amongst their major drivers as well. But allowing the density to increase is destroying that feeling. Killingley is gradually becoming just another town, and it's losing its allure. While I understand the need to bring in revenue and provide housing, these should be done in a way that preserves the rural nature of the town, which the residents have repeatedly expressed that they want to keep. It seems like the zoning committee is disregarding the preferences of Killingley residents in order to appease builders, which is shameful. Please listen to what people are saying they want before people start leaving the area over this. If we keep going the way we are, we're going to look back on this in the future and be deeply regretful." So, and I would just like to add to that, like, I truly do understand that there are ways in which we need to build up the community. We have to, you know, make things interesting for people to come here, and I get that. But I really do feel like that's overshadowing what a lot of people are saying that they want. And I, while I'm not saying we shouldn't be doing any of this, I think there's a better way to find a balance. And I'm just asking for the zoning commission to keep an open mind and listen to people, what people are asking for, and just try to strike that balance rather than going, you know, too far to the other side.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak? Just name and address, please, for the record.
Yes, my name is Roger Goslin. I live at 347 Hartford Pike, directly across the street from 350. And I mean directly across the street from 350.
So, excuse me for a minute. That's going to be a public hearing tonight?
Yep.
All right, so you don't want to, this is for stuff that's not already on the agenda? So you can wait a few minutes, and you can speak during that public hearing?
Okay.
That'll pertain to that directly, rather than, this is for general stuff that's not on a public hearing, okay?
Ed Grandelsky, Upper Maple Street. I spoke last month about, we have private ways, not town roads. I think you should add to your regulations that when you do a subdivision, there should be a sign up until such time that the town council approves the road to say, "Private way, not a town road." I talked to Mary the other day, and yeah, Matt's going to put up some signs. We have no specific document that says identifying these private thoroughfares. And it should be, I guess, this is the place where it would start. At day one, when somebody's out there, so Joe prospective homeowner comes in, and developers building the first, first house right on the existing town road at that intersection, they don't know that they're buying into a private road. They get it, "Oh, there's bonds, there's this and that, that the road is going to be developed." Well, like I said, Colonial Drive on Upper Maple Street, how many years has that been through your process? It is not a town road, has not been approved. I don't know when that's going to happen. So this may shed some light, but I think you guys are the place where that should be. I don't know where you could put it in, in your rules, but it should be somewhere so that, well, the example that I give you, my, my wife's folks, when they bought into Zodara Heights many years ago, they never understood that the road they bought into was not a town road until six years after they bought their house.
So that meant that the homeowners are then, have to do the road maintenance costs?
Well, that too, but I mean, I don't know if the, well, the developer was doing, doing that. But I'm saying, you put a sign up, it's a private road, it's a flag. That, that's all I, that's all we can do while they're, while they're building the road, or whatever. And then some of these are done in phases, or whatever, but it's so confusing that I look around and someone, you know, acquaintances of mine, and, "Oh, I like that house." I don't dare give my opinion, because they'll shoot me to say they want to be the first one to have dibs on it. But the legality of it is it's not a town road until the town council accepts it. So somewhere, I don't know how, I don't know how we can do that. But I would like to see something.
I mean, those things are discussed at the meetings when we approved it. To have it long-term, put out there long-term, I mean, to me, it's, lies on the attorneys and, you know, whoever reviews the deeds, because I mean, it's going to be written in a deed that it's not a town road.
Well, I did that to an attorney.
Ed, we, years ago, we did, when we were doing subdivisions over, we had addressed that to a degree where we, we made that issue go before the town council prior, so that that had to be accepted as a town road. I remember exactly how it turned out, but I remember we wanted them to have a discussion saying that it was going to be a town road, or it was not going to be a town road. So if they came through and they wanted it to be a town road, it had to be, it was never going to be a town road, and I lost the council.
Right.
Approved it ahead of time.
Right. But the perception is, when it goes through, when, when you guys approve some of these subdivisions, they got bonding and all this other stuff, it's going to be inspected by engineering, blah, blah, blah. But Colonial Drive is not a town road. You got, you guys did your thing. So where do, where do I go? Do I, I have to get the town council to write an ordinance to that effect?
I mean, but if you looked at the deeds, it wouldn't, it wouldn't refer to it as a town road. I'm almost certain it wouldn't. So I don't, I mean, I get what you're saying, but where, where exactly do you do that? I mean, other than put a sign at the end of the road, saying that is, I mean, you could do that?
I, you know, I mean, I looked at an attorney, I talked to an attorney about buying something, and it was in this situation. I kind of set him up, and I says, "What's going on?" And then I says, "Before I went too far, I said, 'I want a copy of your professional liability insurance.'" And then he said, "Why?" I says, "Because you're going to miss that." But he went running as fast as he could. That, that, he was not going to be responsible for something like that. And there's so much of this stuff that falls through the cracks, you know?
So what's your idea of a solution?
I have a problem, I have a problem down, down the street from me. It, the road is, it's met your requirements supposedly, but it's, it's worn out. Town attorney says they got to repave, they haven't. It's not come to the council yet, because the developer hasn't come, the developer didn't do his due diligence and come to the council and have it approved in, in a reasonable amount of time. So I'm just trying to alert the public that, or maybe put a big sign, "Buyer beware," you know?
When you say, when you say that was already done down the road from you, but we haven't really approved anything with roads in years.
Yeah, but the road, the road was supposedly approved, all the bonding was cleared from you guys, but the developer was supposed to go and come to the town council to get the approval.
And that's. To be a town road.
To be a town road.
And this is a subdivision?
Right. So.
How did, I don't know how it would have got passed.
Well, it did, it got, it got.
Without being specific, how can you?
It's, it's, well, then, it's got to be a condition of whatever the bonds or whatever else that are on it, can't be released until.
Well, it's even part of construction. You can't even sell a house until, you know, bonds are issued for the road to be appro, um, partial, at least partially completed. It has to be, the asphalt has to be, at least the first layer of asphalt, because it typically requires two layers.
Yeah, but if it, if it does not become a town road, where is Joe homeowner in this mix?
He's holding the bag.
Well, because there's bonds.
Well.
There's, let's put it this way, right now, there's, bonds are collected until.
The bonds, there's no more, there's no more bond money on this project. The bonds have all been released.
Without being specific, I don't know how I can.
Well, I'm just saying a simple, if we put something out front.
But I, I don't understand, I mean, this is a bad problem, but I, well.
I mean, we, I don't understand it being a bad problem. We've, this has been, this has been worked with the council and the commission years ago when we reviewed planning and subdivision regs. You got a comment, Brian?
No, I just, I just pulled up the subdivision rules, and we do, we do address it twice there. I mean, your point is to try to make it more public. We do require it, if it's going to maintain a private road or common driveway, that a note's placed on the final subdivision plan and in a deed to the property stating such, right, subdivision served by a private road. So again, if you're buying a property, you should be obviously seeing that, and your deed attorney should see it.
All right, I, I, right, I under.
So that's there, number one. Number two, road acceptance, as, as the chairman said, says, "We request it upfront that, that the developer tell the commission of his, of his or her intention to seek road acceptance prior to initiating such action with the town council." So it's told to us during the subdivision review. And then again, we do have a maintenance bond, and, and that has to be in place before release of the actual performance bond. So again, we've done everything we can on the subdivision side outside of requiring a big sign that says.
That's kind of what I'm looking for.
Right, so.
Yeah, that's, I just want to make that point.
Yeah, I think the commission stands that, that, you know, maybe we request a big sign that says, "Private road." But that doesn't solve the dilemma of the property owner needs to do his own due diligence.
Well, true, but it would flag it that the homeowner would be, or the attorney, if they do drive by.
Exactly, and it's on the deed. So when they do see the deed before closing, they should see, "Hey, this is a private road."
Title search.
No, I.
Everybody has a title search.
Well, but I've had title searches on my property.
What isn't the town council doing? Town council with the highway department puts up signs saying what road it is, right? And everything, where there's a certain location.
Well, I, I guess I will have to make an ordinance.
Why don't they, why don't they put up a sign? They make their own signs.
Well, they do.
Yeah, put up a sign saying, "Private road."
I'm just looking for where the, where the, who has the authority to do, I guess I'm going to have to set up an ordinance for that, strictly for that effect. I have no problem, but I'm just looking at when's the best time, and, you know, when the subdivision plan is going out. If everybody would do what they were doing in a perfect world, we'd be okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. You had something to say?
If I remember right, we did put a condition on the Colonial Drive that, that would be a town road before any construction stopped.
Started or stopped?
Started. So if it's not a town road.
There was a lot of discussion on it. I remember that.
I know, but I wasn't part of it.
So until the town, until it becomes a town road, they can't stop.
Yeah, I don't remember the condition, so.
That one I remember.
Okay. Any other commenters tonight on something that's not part of the public hearings? Okay. Public comment can be made in person or submitted by 2:00 PM the day of the meeting via email at publiccomment@killingleyct.gov, mail to the Town of Killingley Planning and Development Office, 172 Main Street, Killingley, Connecticut, 06239. Put in a Dropbox on the side of the town hall. Public comments will be posted on the town's website, www.killingley.org. As a hybrid meeting, citizens can participate in the citizen's comment by webex, townofkillingley.my, my dot webex dot com forward slash townofkillingley dot my forward slash i, P H P, question mark, M T I D equals M three one six one zero four, too, too much, right? Okay. Meeting number two six three one eight three three five six three nine, password P Z C dot zero one six two four dot meet, and by phone, one dash four one five six five five zero 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 one. Okay. First thing on the agenda, though, map change, 24, 1336. I thought we had the other one first, then. Okay, I'm going to recuse myself on this one. Brian, take over.
What is this, is application 24, 1336?
Yep, Zone Map Change Application 24, 1336. Mark Bernard, Bernard Properties LLC, Zone Change from Low Density to Village Commercial for the following properties, 350 Hartford Pike, G I S map 107, Lot 51, 3.013 acres, 328 Hartford Pike, G I S map 107, Lot 50, 0.78 acres, and 319 Hartford Pike, G I S map 107, Lot 19, 0.65 acres, and 339 Hartford Pike, G I S map 107, Lot 16, I assume that's 0.42 acres, even though decimal point's missing. Yes, so. All right, is the applicant here?
Yes.
Can you come on up, sir, to the table, make sure the green light's on, and present your application? Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Mark Bernard, 350 Hartford Pike in Daville. Here for the zone change.
Can you hear me? Speaking with Jonathan, when I was trying, I had somebody approach me about maybe putting a bakery or something into one of the buildings, and the current zoning doesn't allow for that. When I bought the property, I thought I was kind of grandfathered in with what the church did, which it was, if I had a church there. And since that we're not doing a church there, it's finding the best use for all the buildings that I have. So speaking with Jonathan, looking at the maps and the zoning, you know, the best thing to do would be to do the zone change, so then the property could be utilized.
So you're looking for Village Commercial?
Yes.
Okay.
So there's, the staff gave to you, there's certain sections in our amendment section that you need to go through some current criteria, explain to us why, why this proposed change is appropriate?
Oh.
I don't know if you've done that, or. Okay.
Okay, so do I read this, or just?
You need to respond to that. Nope, nope, just that criteria. You're just looking at section, not just for clarification, you're looking at Section 902 criteria?
Yeah, just, I mean, I'm not going to tell you how to do the application, but just give us more information outside of, "I bought the building and can't do what I want."
Okay, no, um, like I said, when I met with Jonathan, looking to try to make the best use of the property, on the zoning right now, really, like, nothing can really be done there. So looking at the zoning, and looking at the best thing to do for the property, the Village zoning commercial makes the most sense, as far as, like I said, if somebody wants to do a bakery, or some kind of business in the big function hall, which is 6,000 square feet, there's plenty of parking, plenty of lighting, it meets most of the criteria that would be used for business. But like I said, right now, nothing can be done on the property. The church itself also, I'd want to do weddings or some kind of events if somebody wants to rent it for a birthday party, but anything indoor cornhole is a possibility, but at this point, nothing can be done with any of the properties with the current zoning. So I think lot size meets all the requirements that we were talking about when I met with Jonathan. And looking at the neighborhood, two doors over, we have the commercial zone, then across the, you have four G's. The other side of that is also the Village Commercial. So like I said, it just made sense for this one, so I could do some kind of business and utilize the properties.
Commission members, any questions for him before we go to public comment?
Well, I, I think that it would, I understand the, the need and the general concept, but I would think that if you spent some time with town staff, you could come up with an, an idea that you could, I mean, something concrete.
Well, I have somebody who wants to do a bakery.
Well, hold on, we don't need uses. I mean, you need to justify why the zone needs to go from low density to Village Commercial. I mean, we, we don't talk about concrete ideas or businesses, because it applies to the lock, anything on the Village Commercial could happen. So this is not the time to talk about, you know, bakery or anything like that. It's to tell us why you believe that the zoning is incorrect, or needs to be modified from low density to Village Commercial, and how it fits the suitability of that land in that particular area to go to Village Commercial. So that's what the zone change needs to be focused on. Sorry to ever jump in, I just want to make sure we didn't get any applicant information. I mean.
So low density, there's really nothing, like, we don't want the property as far as if they want to do business or something there. So doing the Village Commercial just opens up the possibilities for the property to be used to its, its, I think, highest and best use. Because right now.
What, what would be the impacts on the surrounding properties, the surrounding area, if this was to go to Village Commercial? I mean, why, why does it, that land more suitable Village Commercial versus low density?
Um, I think because it has the parking lot already, and they've already used it. It's been used in the past when the church was there, doing pretty much what I want to do. But they were grandfathered in with, with what they did, there's some basically trying to do.
Parish halls, I believe, are a low-density use.
Right, so, but they used to do the first, right, they used to do, like, how people do fundraisers and do stuff like that, do food, some looking to have kind of the same use as what they did. They did weddings in the church. The low density can't do that. The Village Commercial, something that could be done. So I'm literally trying to do what was basically done of the property.
Right, but the Village Commercial opens it up to all other activities besides just a parish hall type, or that type of activity you're describing.
Right.
So how is that suitable for that land? All those other activities, if it was to go to Village Commercial, we can't restrict you just to that type of use. It would be open up to all Village Commercial. So again, just trying to get out, how is that land suitable Village Commercial versus low density? And what impacts on the surrounding neighborhood would it have?
I don't think there would really be much of an impact. Like I said, down across the, you already have a restaurant that's already right over there, has a big parking lot, it's, it's fits the needs. I think it suits what would be done over there, because it already has the parking lot, has everything that they've done there. We're not taking trees down, and not opening anything up, or doing anything different with the property than what's already been done. So it, it opens itself up, I think, better for something now than what it did before, because it, it fits, I think, the Village Commercial use far better than just the low density for the possibilities of what the property could be.
Commission members, any question, other questions before we go to public comment? Or we can always come back?
I'd like to hear what the public has to say first.
Yeah, I want to listen to the public.
Okay. Before we open the public comment, any other comments?
No.
All right, so a public comment on this application, if you have any either fours or against, we'll do the fours first.
Let me move back.
You can stay there, that's fine. I just want Ed to sit down again. Sorry, Ed. All right, so we'll do, anybody not four up front, please state your name, address, and please give us your public comment.
Now, so they change?
Ed Grandelsky, Upper Maple Street. Well, yes and no. Section 900, application. The application for amendment shall be made on a form specified by the commission and shall be accompanied by. The signs shall be posted. Well, there were signs posted, but I don't understand why signs were posted on utility poles. That's private property. I don't know what staff is involved, or staff giving direction to the applicant, but putting a proposed zone change sign on a utility pole looks more like a yard sale sign than anything else. There's supposed to be a report from the zoning enforcement officer attesting to whether the above-described sign was erected and maintained. I, I don't, I never heard anything about that. Property lines, including streets and watercourses, and the names of all the budding property owners, including those across the street. I didn't see any, I don't know where property owners are. Location of any existing or proposed building, structures, streets, driveways, parking, loading docks, and outside storage areas. So. Location of any existing or proposed watercourses, 100-year flood plain, wetlands, storm drainage, and sewer disposal facilities. Well, I think there's storm drainage on that property, and I think there's some kind of sewers. There's nothing, no map depicting any of that. That's on the church side. Now, when the, when you go to the parcels on the, the two parcels on the southerly side, one abutting to four G's property, and one sticking out like a sore thumb in the middle, I don't know where, especially that, one that's sticking out by itself, adjacent to Mr. Goslin's property. Again, none of these, whatever I threw out, applied. I mean, I think more work needs to be done, but I don't, I think this is a very incomplete application from, from what I can see. Then, if you do change it to Village Commercial, in the Village Commercial regs, it says there shall be, for new, any new building, there shall be no parking in the front. Now, I, I caught a ration of grief when the properties abutting Owen Bell Park was, was being discussed, and that the property, parking was going to be in the front because the bank had parking in the front. Well, this is a brand-new application. And it says specifically, "No parking in front of any new building." So I just want to throw that out there, that whatever's adjacent doesn't apply, this is brand-new, these rules should apply across the board, or there must be some major issues as to why, you know, certain things can't be met. Let me see. But yeah, I, I just think that on this page, the amendment page, it's an incomplete application. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Any next person, please?
Hi, my name is Roger Goslin, and this is my wife Pam. We own 347 Hartford Pike, directly across from 350. And I sent, gave this letter to Jonathan this morning, I'd like to read it. I'm sure you probably all have a copy. And it says, "We wish the commission to deny this application. According to Village Commercial, Section 420.1, intent is to provide commercial establishments within walking distance or short drives from residential areas. We already have 60-plus commercial establishments within this distance. We do not need any more commercial in our residential area. Town already has a commercial district close by and is expanding in that area. Route 101 is now a traffic problem, with traffic backed up from the shopping center lights, railroad crossings, school buses, all the way to the intersection light by four G's restaurant. The town sewer system is now at capacity, and this will only add to more flow to the system. There is also a right-of-way between 350 and 328 that goes from 101 all the way past Frito Lay that shows up on the map, also a driveway to a residential property behind 319. Realtor Bernard has had 350 Hartford Pike for sale for at least six months, and has contacted other property owners on this application to help him make this change, only for personal gain. He will sell the property and leave the area, leaving us with the problems that arise. He also has a colleague on this commission who recused himself from this vote, as he should, but will still have an informed. but will still have an influence on other members of this commission. We do not want this change. We own 347 Hartford Pike, number 15 on the map, directly across the street from 350. All we see is that property and all the activity there. We have enough commercial business in the area now. Please reject this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, anybody else like to speak?
I'd like to say something, but I didn't put anything in or mail them to you.
No, that's fine, sir. Just please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please, and just please give us your comment.
Okay, my name is Tom Spain. I live at 1589 Upper Maple. It's right next to the school, can lean to me here. So, I've been living up here probably 40 years. I moved out of New York. My father bought a campground in Abington. That was in '73 in the gas crunch. We went right down the chute. So both my parents went to work the glass plant. I ended up working the glass plant. I worked there 17 years till it closed. Then I got into construction. I did 20 years of that, now I'm retired. I'm looking across the street, I live across the street from that cemetery. Church is right there. I'm in the Knights of Columbus. I used to go in the church and go across the hall.
Nope, stay with the mic. Sorry.
That's what I did at church. I'm in the Knights of Columbus. Then that church closed. We did fish fries there, we did a lot of great things there. Now I went to Our Lady of Last Lit in Brooklyn, Knights of Columbus up there. Everything is terrific, but I live across the street from that cemetery. Now, if they build things in front of the church up to the corner across from 4G's, that means all of the, in the back of them buildings, there'll be dumpsters, a long fence adjoining the cemetery. Now, I'm getting old now, I'm thinking I would like to buy a plot in that cemetery. Now you guys are going to start putting dumpsters over there at the end of the cemetery. I'm like, thinking about it, not doing it. So I don't agree with this, and I hope you don't do it. That's it.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Is there anybody else, republic, like to speak on this application? No? Okay, commission members, any follow-up questions, comments?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
Michelle Murphy, 325 Breakneck Hill Road. It's not a comment, really, it's a question. Like, I kind of don't understand the layout of it. Like, where, you're interested in the church property, like where the other properties play in.
Mr. Bernard, so regarding the other properties, so do you own all the properties?
I do not. I only own 350 Hartford Pike.
Okay, so are the other property owners, I assume they are in support of this zone change?
They...
Yes, ma'am.
They have signed, they have either sent us an email. We had two of the other property owners come into town hall, and they signed either the application in front of us or they signed an email that they sent us in front of it.
That's what I was going to ask, so there's nothing on the record that we had, that we had our applications document showing? Like, typically we had the...
They are there, they weren't there, but they were listed as the landowners. They would not have been listed if we did not have the authority.
Okay. And those lots today are, what is lot 16? Out of curiosity. Is it resident, is it a house, is it vacant?
Lot 16, that's not one of my lots, right?
No, that's the one across, it's, I believe, that has...
That's the sore thumb.
That has the...
It's a single family, right?
There's a residence on it?
It's a residence.
There's a residence on it.
And lot 19?
That's a four-unit.
And 51's the church, right?
350 is the church, yep. Well, I don't see a lot from it.
328.
The one to the left, that's a six-unit.
Six-unit?
328, that's a six-unit.
Okay.
And just to let you know, there is a one large map. I never got the 11-by, 11-by-14 size map for the commission members, but there is a large map here, it was part of the application, and it does have the abutters listed. And you can look at it if you so choose.
Okay. So this is... That's 350, right here. That's us.
That's the church.
This is 350. Right here, 328 is right here, you have a lot across the way here, you have a lot across the way here. So... Yeah. Okay. So while, while this map shows 350, it doesn't show the other...
Right.
Three lots and that information, so... So regarding the application, at least the procedures, there does seem to be some information that's lacking that would need to be submitted to make it a complete application under the procedure section. So I'll leave it for you, if you want to take the opportunity to come back with that information, or if you'd like us to move forward with this application this evening.
I can come back with it.
Okay.
So the continuance would be...
So you need a motion for a continuance?
You would, it would be until Monday, October 21st.
So... Commission, have any questions or comments or... Right now?
Has, has he filed a formal application for this yet?
Yes, that's what we're hearing right now.
Has everything been met on these things?
That's what we just stated, there's some information that's lacking.
Yeah.
If he wants to come back and present that to update his application, which we do for all of our applications, right? There's questions or comments. So he has the ability to come back. So there's other direction.
Is there a time limit now?
No.
For zone changes?
He can agree to a continuance for 65 days.
There's no time limit on how long that can...
No, he can, he can agree to a continuance up to 65 days.
Up to 65 days?
But he's, we're doing, at this point, it's one continuance till our next meeting, or if someone makes that motion, it'd be one continuance to our next meeting on Monday, October 21st.
Okay, I understand, all right.
Yep. Yep, that's on.
Yep. And I would suggest, outside of the, just the technical items that do need to be submitted, is that you focus on section 902 and look at the reasonings in section 902 as to why this commission should, you know, try to adopt the zone change.
Okay.
Zone map change.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is there any other questions or comments at this point in time from anyone?
We need the motion if we're going to have it.
Yes, we will. Being none, can I have a motion to continue this to the next hearing?
You've got it.
October 21?
You've got it.
Correct, October 21? Yes. Motion by Verger, October 21. I got it twice. Second it? Mike, any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
No, I would say, I would suggest you keep that, so you can work on that.
Good night, folks, I expect to see you probably next meeting.
All right, thank you. That was Attorney Slater. All right, can I move on, agenda, sleep in the back? Motion, no jerk? Unfinished business, request for site modification, application in 1912, 13. I believe that's been withdrawn.
That has been withdrawn.
All right. So I took care of one. Zone map 24, 1336, that has been continued. And now we're on section eight, new business.
Do we go home? I just go home?
I was close, dude. Section eight. We're right there.
New business, zone map changes, Commerce Avenue, proposed changes. 119 Commerce Avenue, construction of commercial. Residential high density, then 79 Commerce, 57 Commerce, 53 Commerce, 57 Commerce, 49 Commerce, 51 Commerce, 47 Commerce, 41 Commerce, 37 Commerce, total 8.28 acres from industrial, central business district. The commission goes to a consensus to move all staff to a divided conference notice to landowners, borough, Danielson Council, etc., etc.
So this is this stuff, right?
Right.
Do you have anything you can share?
What we have here is, if you go to the first map, the colored map, the first one, 119 Commerce Avenue is actually what's labeled as number 16. That's bright red, that makes it general commercial. Okay? The item, all the other lots or parcels below that are purple, which has them zoned as industrial. This, yes, this arena or these parcels are in the borough of Danielson, right next to the river. Literally, I'm going to say, couple of blocks away from us. As we're going through, it does not make sense to staff to keep industrial where it is in the borough. So what staff is suggesting is that the purple goes into the central business district.
And they look like there's already structures there.
There's structures there, right now they're residential structures. They're privately owned. That's why I'm saying, if we agree to it tonight, I would send out proper notifications to all the landowners. Landowners would get a notice by certified mail.
Okay, but they're all homes or businesses?
They're, they're, right now, I think some have our homes that contain a business in them or have in the past. The thing with an industrial, they would, it'd be very difficult, so an industrial zone, to have anything sort of developed at that point. And also, we're thinking of sometimes when it is, because it is a, the type of zone it's owned, the homeowners may be burdened through their homeowner's insurance or through their mortgages, because of the type of building it is. Even though it's a residence, it's still zoned industrial.
Okay, so what do you think the problem is here, or what is the goal here? Because if people are living in an industrial zone, it makes sense to consider making it not an industrial zone.
Some of the homes are, I think there's at least one house in the area that's vacant. There's also an industrial area up top that would be more for a central business district.
Okay, you meaning this thing or this thing?
In the purple.
In the purple, the top of the purple?
Yep.
Okay.
And it, that would make more sense to bring it into the central business district. In the central business district, we do allow residential, but we also allow the commercial. So that's why we were thinking of making those two. The red, we were thinking of bringing that into, because right now, that building is not there at all.
Above the purple.
Above the purple, number 16, above the purple. Bring that into the residential high density, because that's what that is surrounded by.
And it would be doable, meaning that right now there's a structure, I don't know what the structure is like?
On number 16, there is no structure.
Oh, okay.
It was burnt to the ground.
Okay. So there's the potential in this kind of a shape, there's a little elbow room other than, you know, the purple narrow thing. So they, somebody could actually come up with a plan, an idea, something to...
And again, it was suggested low density. That could also go for the central business district as well. I, you know, it's, it's up to the commission, but we were just thinking what made, what made the most sense for the things.
So the yellows are all residential across the street?
That's across the railroad. That's the other thing that, because you've got the road, but you've got the railroad right there.
Those houses are a bit too extreme.
Yeah. You got an idea?
No, that's, that was the idea, was to take the industrial, bring it back into the central business district.
Yep.
Because it does allow the residential, but it also allows...
Business.
Small business.
Yes.
And then bring the general commercial one, because that's kind of by itself, attach that to the residential high.
So right now you get the purple, which is saying it's industrial, but there's no industrial there. There's actually been the glass company, it was a mill on the very top of the purple one that burned several weeks, a long time ago. And I'm sure Mike knows what that was.
You're not that old yet, right?
There's a power plant there too, right?
What's that?
Further up, a power plant.
That's way up.
Is that on 18 or...
That's way, that's way up.
There's, there's, yeah, a substation north of these properties. There's also a hydroelectric generator south of these properties. The only business, like real brick and mortar business that is on there is Killingley Glass, who I believe have it for sale as well, so...
They were out of there, right?
Yes, yeah. Yeah. The rest of the properties, all in the purple, are residential in nature. And in terms of, you know, any financing opportunities, we've seen it on other properties, on Tracy Road comes to mind, where a bank actually kicked one back because it was industrial, even though the use had always been residential. That was a previous map change that the commission had.
Could get financing to buy.
Yep.
Okay, so that means that we should, can consider changing this to residential?
Well, I think you're doing, you were talking central business?
Which is mixed.
Which is mixed, central mix.
That's like go as commercial, where you can do residential and commercial.
Yeah.
You know, which, it's already a mixture of that already.
Okay.
And you're including that other commercial site above it?
The 119 Commerce.
Or residential.
To residential high.
Oh, you're going to change that one to yellow alone, not...
Or, well, you could do that, or you could keep it into the central business district. That, that part is up to the commission, but we just wanted to give you the options.
It would make more sense as central business, is waterfront, you're waterfront, and it would, it's it's a larger parcel, so it gives opportunity for both residential and, whereas presidential, if you make it strictly residential, then it doesn't have opportunity for business. Four acres. Yeah, that's a lot. Well, that's a lot of waterfront, that, you know, let me almost face it, Killingley needs some waterfront.
Well, how accessible is it? I mean, if it's like high up over the water, or does it, or can you actually, let's say, take a canoe down there and plop it in the water?
Well, you've been down on the river, second bill from here.
Yeah.
Because that's where the boat launch is. Remember the boat launch?
There's so many in my life.
You don't remember?
No, I don't remember.
The kayak, we were not, there's a kayak, and the guy used to rent kayak.
I trust you.
Well, I'm just trying to remind you.
Okay.
So, I don't remember how steep that is on the north side of that, where it meets the river.
You mean on the red?
On that, on that lot 16, yeah.
Lot 16, I'm not...
I know, as you go through the north, it gets, you get a higher embankment. I cleaned the sewer, there's a sewer line along there for the town one time years and years ago.
He has levels up there now.
Yeah.
There is a line that runs right along there.
Right, there's a sewer, the sewer main goes all the way, 155 mile up to, up north.
So why'd we leave it industrial when we did the P O C D?
Drops about six feet.
We didn't finish.
That used to be gracious.
You're talking about way back.
Yeah, we went through all the maps.
I think...
When you were diesel trains.
We kept going back, we, you know, we didn't actually finish everything we had talked about.
The prior P O C D from 2010 to 2020, I wasn't here. But I think if it was kept industrial, it was because of the Killingley... But I think if it was kept industrial, it was because of the Killenly Glass. Killenly Glass is no longer there. We've been in...
Connecticut Farmer-Pettis still there, if I'm not mistaken, in 2000 death.
Right, so I think that's what...
There was an electrical supplier down there too.
Wait, farther up, farther up.
That's when it burned down, I think.
Yeah.
There's also a church.
So, and I think that was part of it, what was still there, you didn't want to, although it'd be legal nonconforming, wanted to be able to continue, but like, Killenly Glass is no longer there. The pet store is gone, the building itself is gone. Out of Killenly Glass, only one of the two buildings there is still there.
Plus, Killenly Glass could still operate on the central business district.
Right.
And it could dig the upstairs if they wanted to rent, rent the residential. So owner acted by building. Like you said, I think that was Barrett Electric, now it's Connecticut Farmer-Pettis. That burnt first, and then that one there eventually burnt. But he, this one put in the dock, there's a dock there, Connecticut Farmer-Pettis, because they were renting out, between this guy and this place, they were renting out canoes and stuff. So it's the beginning of a recreational area.
Right, but it's, I gotta reiterate what John said. We've actually had somebody come back, and I don't know if you remember, but Tracy Road, they wanted to buy the house. The house was a beautiful antique house, but the bank said no, because it was industrial. Bank, they were having problems because of the bank and the insurance company.
So, so did we change the zone?
Yes, we did.
Okay, good. Oh, come on.
So.
I lose a lot of stuff, but not everything.
Do you know what I'm gonna point to?
At this point, we just don't see this...
1978, what do you think I'm gonna remember all that?
Um, we just don't think that the industrial zone makes sense at this point in time.
Right.
Because what industrial, really what industrial would locate there? They would have to buy all of it.
And then there would be the hassle of, what are they emitting, what are they producing?
Everything would involve wetlands as well.
Yeah.
So the viability of an industrial use today in that area would be low.
To me, it would, such a business, you're gonna allow a commercial entity to move in and do something along the riverfront, which would be industrial, you're not gonna have public participation in, you know, take advantage of the waterfront.
Okey dokey.
Any comment, Mike?
No, I think it's a good idea to really, central business district.
Central business on all?
John?
I like it.
Brian?
Sure.
Yes. So central business on all?
So C L and P is in the next purple piece up here, this industrial? And that's a, that's a larger parcel, right?
Yes, I, there's only so much I could fit on this map.
Yeah, that's definitely a larger parcel.
So, yeah, C L and P is effectively spot zoned, it's completely on an island.
Right.
It's also a utility company, so it's a little unique.
And the one on the right, that's C L and P off of Mechanic Street, right?
Correct.
All right, you need a motion, or what do you, you got the direction, or do you need a motion?
Well, we'll have, you'll just hear this as a public hearing next month, again, October 21st.
So is a consensus?
There's a consensus.
Next.
Attorney Slater has signed off, so there's no Q and A for Attorney Slater.
Okay. Adoption of minutes, workshop minutes, August 19th, regular meeting minutes, August 19th, motion?
I'll make a motion to bless it and...
Second?
Second.
Second by John? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extension?
Oh, there was a typo though, but I'll bother, um...
You need to bother her later.
Joanne.
Good. Mr. Slater, continuation of workshop, so we're gonna do the same?
Did you take a vote for that?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
I'm questioning myself.
Oh, you did, you did both?
I questioned myself, no, this one here, we didn't vote yet.
Regular meetings you had.
Oh, yeah, we did that, yeah, yeah. Continuation of workshop?
No, we still haven't.
Just a question, if there's gonna be a correction, did they, has they moved it?
I think it's a typo.
It's a typo, huh?
Yeah. It's just the scripters.
No, and the typo that jumped out at me was the, was in that big yellow section of text, and it's already been taken care of, like.
In the meeting minutes?
No.
That's under the P R D.
Yeah.
I just need to verify, you're, so workshop meeting and regular meeting, you voted on at the same time?
Yes, I included a vote.
Okay, just want to verify.
Well, so much for taking shortcuts. Continuation of workshop. All right, so we're gonna do this at the next meeting, this what we did?
Yep.
One hour in advance?
One hour in advance.
Everybody's good with that?
Okey dokey.
Okay. Workshop schedule, will this, take it as it comes, it looks 6:00 PM next October 21st. I might take that day off, it's my birthday, the day before.
That doesn't count.
Keith, is your mic on? Is your mic on?
No.
Thank you.
Why did you catch it in the purple place?
I'm pretty sure Brian's was picking you up, so, but you're good.
I can't repeat everything I said, guess, I don't remember.
I think you're good, it was getting caught on Brian's.
Ah, zoning practice, anybody? Good, department report, zoning enforcement officer report, and then the wetlands, anything to report?
Z B I didn't have a quorum last week, we will be holding a special meeting this Thursday. There's about a year's worth of applications, there's four, there's four of them, so.
Years worth?
That's right, you guys are just... Economic development?
They didn't have a meeting this month, next meeting is November 5th.
Town council?
I have a question.
And you're sitting here just to say one sentence, poor thing!
You entertain her.
Killenly just had this thing, oh, the water pollution control was denied by the federal government, right? Has, how long is the contract with Brooklyn?
I'm not sure, we can get back to you on that.
Is Killenly considering severing that?
No.
And getting Brooklyn to put their own plant in?
No, at the last town council meeting, they approved 2 million, 2.1 million dollars to do the design phase, so we were denied federal funds because we didn't show a match, or that we were shovel ready. We just asked for the money, so lessons learned, we're going back. They approved the money for the design plan, which can take up to two years, because it goes back and forth with deep.
So for two years, they're not gonna be able to put additional?
There are a series of pre-approved hookups that are grandfathered in. It'll be a case-by-case basis, that'll have to be seen through the commission, get authorization through the commission.
So two years, the design phase?
It can take up to two years.
Another couple of years?
And then we apply for the construction money.
How come it takes so long to do?
Come on, you've had many years of government, and you don't realize?
But Brooklyn isn't considering...
Are you sure?
Killenly isn't considering having them put their own facility in? I thought of, you know, that would free up a whole lot, wouldn't it?
Well, we know some of our manufacturers are reducing water content, but it's not the water, it's the nutrient content that's most concerning, so it's trying to reduce that nutrient content.
So volume isn't a concern?
You know, one toilet won't make a difference. A high manufacturing using, you know, making something with high nutrient content will make a big difference.
So, inform me, what is, I mean, I have a general idea of what nutrient content is it, but what is it?
So for example, Frito-Lay is our largest user, permitted user, and they have, they have this starch that comes through.
Yeah, okay, I understand.
But they have their own plant?
They do a lot of pretreatment, but they're still our major water user, and they have a contract with wastewater.
Okay?
Did you want, Michelle?
Well, yeah, I was waiting, she... She gave up?
She gave up.
So as she said, we donated, designated 2 million dollars of undesignated funds to sewer funds capital for design. We're taking that, because we did settle with the power plant, and so that, we had money to do that. Leftover money in the past two years, where we hadn't been able to settle those negotiations, was I think 2 million dollars, and 2,650,000-ish dollars, and so 2 million is going to the sewer fund. We took 1.6 million dollars in ARPA funds to offset the borrowing for the Westfield AV project, and that should lower our regular budget. The dredging is complete in Owen Bell Park, they still have some steps to do, but the, I have a big list here, if anybody wanted me to read it, of the couple steps, but in general, the dredging is complete. Let me just see, Lake Road is settled. Vision Committee, September 21st, 1:00 PM at the library, please come, if you want to be part of the vision committee to, or if you know anybody that does, to say what you want to see the town look like going forward.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
So that's a great idea, but is there some way to take those good ideas, and then look at, you know, what the planning and zoning already is? So that if somebody has a good idea about, you know, let's say this piece of property that we're just talking about, is that, you know, have the great idea, but then before it moves forward, look to see, you know, whether the location is feasible for that great idea.
Yeah, I don't think the vision committee is gonna be specifically about this plot of land, or that plot of land, it's gonna be more vague about where does the town want to go? Do they, you know, do they want to develop the school area, or activity areas? Or do they want to, you know, keep part of the town rural? Do they want to have, you know, big changes in industries? More of a general vision than it is this piece, this piece, this piece. And they're gonna reach out to the community, and the community's gonna tell them what they want to see, and they're gonna bring it to you, and they're gonna bring it to us. Does that sound right? Yeah, I mean, it's not totally determined what it is, but...
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Motion to adjourn?
Not one.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn.